Okay, and that brings us to unfinished business and 9.1 review of policies. And we're going to do this separate. We have a few of them to review. The first one, I have a motion to adopt as a second read, policy 6240 Investments.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. And this is one that we read before and we had one change. And open the floor up to further discussion on this.
I think this was the question I put up earlier.
Yep.
So there should be some consideration on just additional language around the types of investments. You know, these are conservative, somewhat cash management funds, and we've got listed New York State obligations. By no means am I making any judgment about New York State, but there are certain New York State obligations that may be revenue or project-driven that carry more risk than, say, general obligations of the state that are backed by taxing revenues. So adding credit criteria such as A-rating or some other type of credit criteria with respect to any state municipal bonds that we would consider investing in would be something I'd like us to consider.
So is that language? Go ahead.
How would you like us to consider it?
I would like us to invest in things that are A-rated or better, or general obligations, or what one would call bank-qualified municipal bonds, which are not revenue or project-oriented. They're either essential services or general obligations of the state. So A-rated or better securities.
Okay. I have another question. Greg, what guidelines, if any, does the state give people in your position who go into appropriate investment vehicles?
The state comptroller has a document, and there's three laws as well, but the document follows what the law is. They have a broader, let's say, menu of options to invest in than we currently allow according to our policy. So they list out what we can and can't do as a school district for investments. It's this book here, but I could certainly import it to the board to...
Well, I mean, because what Michael says resonates with me in that we are above all the guardians of the FISC, and we'll be ashamed to any point from now forever investing in vehicles that will turn out to be improved. But I really never looked at what the permissible vehicles are, and so Mike's comments open up a little area that I really haven't looked at all the time.
And again, I think the consistency on an investment policy is that these are cash, cash equivalents, and really reserve funds, yet it opens the gate to something that doesn't fall within the realm of what I would consider a reserve fund.
You know, this is a situation where you've got a policy that allows broad authority, broad investment, investments, period, and a practice which is much more narrow. And as a matter of principle, when our practice is really different from our policy, our policy doesn't really help. You know, it authorizes us to do it, but it doesn't inform our practices. And it would be nice if we could marry or harmonize what we do with our policy. And there's language I'm sure we can come up with, which is, you know, these are what we're authorized to do, and our preference is, and our, you know, is to do A, B, and C, you know, investment-grade securities, that kind of thing.
And I think if you do a ratings threshold, that could be the easiest way, because it's the broadest way to capture what we're trying to capture, which is keep the investments on the safer, liquid, cash-cash-equivalent-like end of the spectrum.
So is it possible then to get new language on this, and we'll take this off the table?
I checked that both our auditors and our attorney, just to make sure we get the proper language.
Makes sense.
I would move to table motion.
Just for clarification, mostly for the community in this case. So what we currently have proposed as policy is more conservative than what the state allows school districts to do. But we might want to even look at something a little bit more conservative. If we go with more, even more conservative language, there's nothing we're currently doing that would need to be changed. We're already beyond any conservative...
We're only using really savings accounts for almost 99% of our funds.
Right. So this feels very comfortable.
So I'd move to table it until a future meeting when Greg can come up with some recommended language, so we can take a look at that again.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. All right. And I have a motion to approve as a second read, 5420 Student Health Services.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And we had no changes from the last time on this particular one. Does anybody have any comments on this policy? All in favor? Now, for our first read, can I have a motion to adopt for a first read, policy 5500 Student Records? And a second?
Second.
Is there anything that we need to talk about, anything on this point?
Nothing very significant. We did do a little formatting to keep it consistent with some other policies, with putting definitions in the front and not the back. But we did include information that came out last year in a parent's bill of rights that needed to be posted to our website. We thought it was prudent to include it also into student records. And that really has to do with our relationships with third-party contractors. So that was really the only change for this.
Okay. And I am on the policy committee, but there was, you know, and a lot of the language that was put in here was recommended from NISBO, right?
Right.
But there was one thing that I just wanted clarification on, and it was under the definitions, and it was education records, and it's the except. You know, the ones that are written here, I'm just not sure what they actually mean. Like, the first one, A, it talks about an example of a memory jogger. So these are education records, those records in any format directly related to the student and maintained by the district or by a party acting on behalf of the district except. And it's talking about, the first exception is records in the sole possession of the individual who made it and not accessible or revealed to any other person except a substitute example of memory joggers. I just wondered what that was. And also, B, was records of the district's law enforcement unit. Who's their district's law enforcement unit?
Right.
And C made sense to me, though. It was, you know, my peers.
So I'll start with memory joggers. Those are things that, you know, I might hear as an assistant principal, or I might know about as an assistant principal, that's not actually put into a child's record. So that is my memory jogger.
Oh, it's literally like...
Exactly. And it's not an official record of any kind. And what we're saying is that education records are those records except those, that somebody might recall from some specific instance. And district's law enforcement unit, it's actually law enforcement. So if there is some sort of law enforcement component to a child's time while they're educated here, this is not part of their educational record.
Okay. So it's just language that we don't normally use in here, but it's fine. Okay. You have no problems with that?
No questions.
Okay. Does anybody?
And I think memory joggers protect students. I think that's a really good piece of...
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
The only quick question I had was third-party contractors. I guess it could be a wide variety of different types of people that would need access to the data. Is this everyone from someone that's providing a service from a health, from a therapy perspective to special services to just run the gamut?
Well, for us, it's really, it's really student information that we are using to gain electronic needs. So children who are part of an app or part of some sort of web-based site that they're going in and they're putting, they have access to our information. So anybody who might have that student information and cannot pass it on.
Got it.
So, you know, as we expand the use of all these electronic devices, and kids during the school day log on and enter personally identifiable information about themselves, and there's third-party apps out there, we're obligated under this to take effort to assure that those people are complying with the privacy laws.
Exactly.
And it's quite a different animal when a third party has an app, now they know a school district is using it, and there's student records involved. It's not just some 13-year-old kid. So what are we doing?
So what Andrew Taylor did for us last year, which was really great, is he went out to all of the third-party contractors, and he made sure that they were aware of our policies regarding student data, and that they were going to be compliant with those policies. So he has an actual list of every third-party contractor that we have, and that they have subscribed to following our student records policy.
Which is different from their privacy policy with respect to any other user, because you read it, most of those privacy policies that say, hey, you know, we got your stuff, we can give it to anybody we want.
Exactly.
If it furthers our business interest. And now they can't.
So they sign, they sign a document?
He has a relationship with them, right? And so he actually posts every single third-party contractor and their relationship with our student records policy, their compliance.
And it's becoming easier to do. I mean, it was exhausting to do the first time, but at this point, educational software providers are realizing they need to do this, or they're not going to get customers.
Right.
And it was right after the envelope.
Yes. Exactly. Exactly.
Any other comments on this? Okay. So we have a motion on the table, all in favor? That brings us to, I have a motion to adopt as a first read, policy 6700 Purchasing, and policy 6700 Regulation, our purchasing regulations.
So moved.
And any discussion?
I'll second it if someone has it.
Oh, thank you. Any comments? Okay. All in favor? That brings us to new business, item 10.1 Transportation Facility Project. And that's Greg.
Yes, thank you. This is a follow-up to our meeting last time, where we talked about and appointed the contractors to do the work for the bus garage renovation project. I provided the board and their packet, information regarding the cost to date, and where we end up in terms of total project costs, which are estimated. I'll just run through the numbers. Phase one and architectural fees paid to date, we've expended so far $307,059, based on the bids ever awarded and the Quonset hut replacement, and with the assumption of putting in a different wash equipment and a manufactured building for the Quonset hut replacement, and architectural fees, and a contingency of 10% of construction, estimated cost to complete the project is $2,362,305. What this leaves us with is looking at funding overall for the project. We did have approval by four different votes of the public to fund this project. Less the money we've spent to date, leaves us with $954,441. With the insurance recovery from the collapse of the Quonset hut, plus the scrap metal we sold, that yielded another $33,844. So the funds we need to complete the project total $1,374,020. So the option being recommended is to, some of this is a good time to, let's say, clean our books a little bit in terms of closed capital projects. We have completed capital projects that are on our books. You can see them in our audit that we just had given to us a short while ago. There's $141,079 available that can be applied directly to this project. These are energy-related projects and other small projects, which have been closed out, which are just sitting on our books. Another piece is the Repair Reserve Fund. This was on our books when I first arrived at Byram Hills. I was just new on the board, and it's been out there for better of 17, 18 years. This should be used, because this part of this project is an actual repair, and the total money is, at this point, as of June 30th, $242,645. We want to do this in the normal course, because it's been there forever. There's no reason to keep a small amount like that on the books either. So that could be used towards this project, leaving us with $990,296 to fund. After this, after we talk about this, I'm going to give a fund balance, a quick presentation, four slides, to review where this money could come from, which would be the Retirement Contribution Fund, would be the recommendation. There is a possibility, depending on what we're looking at, is which pocket is it going to come out of, and when will it come out of the pocket? So like any accounting issue, it's where to charge it and when to charge it. So this money is not needed today. There's not a shovel in the ground as of today. There will be in a short while, and this money won't be needed till later as the project goes on. So there's no pressure on the board to settle on the $990,000, because it hopefully will be less than that when we get further into the project. The other two, the board for the capital projects fund closeout, just needs to be made aware that that's our intent to do, because you'll see it in the audit. It's just charging the cost for the bus garage up to that amount in that fund. We don't move money, it's there, it just will be in a different line that it comes out of. So Susan would make payments out of that same fund, it'll just have a different name on it. And the Repair Reserve Fund, what I'd ask is that we would put it on the agenda for our next meeting, which is December 8th. It would have to be considered a public hearing, which we've done for like our food service, for the breakfast survey, things of that nature, just be designated as a public hearing with the board's intent to spend this money, the $242,645, towards this project. So it would end up being a transfer into the general fund, and it would be spent out of Steve's budget codes, which would be 1620, 1621. We haven't determined which code it would come out of. That would take care of a lot of, we'll say, bookkeeping that we should do to reduce the clutter in our books of closed projects and monies that have been there for all of eternity, it seems. So that's the recommendation. I do have, any questions on where we are right now?
Thanks for your questions. Details, please.
Okay. And then I have a four-slide presentation, just to visually show the question that I thought about when we do this, say, we keep hearing about appropriate use of fund balances, offsetting debt service, that fits into a larger plan that the district has. It's really kind of a cornerstone of what the district's done financially for a good number of years, by carefully and very deliberately bringing money back into the general fund to help reduce taxes. And I do have, like I say, four slides, which I'll go through. The board, the board does have a policy on fund balance. I'll just read the first sentence. "The board recognizes that the maintenance of the fund balance is essential to the preservation of financial integrity of the school district." It's really the cornerstone of what we do. So fund balance, when Dominic Consolo was here, he took a bit of time to look at fund balances and to comment on it. They review our fund balance very carefully every year, because it's really, for corporations, our net worth, our fund balance is the district's net worth. After all of our bills are paid, this is what's left, is fund balance. And the purpose of fund balances, according to policy, and this is what we follow, is number one, to provide sufficient cash flow for daily financial needs; two, to secure, maintain investment-grade bond ratings, this is for our bonds, not the ones we're talking about buying, this is the ones we're selling; three, to offset significant economic downturns or revenue shortfalls; four, to provide funds for unforeseen expenditures related to emergencies; and finally, number five, ensure that construction projects or public work projects are fully completed. So that's the stated purpose of our fund balance. And there's also language in how to use it, and that's what I'm going to be talking about now. I'll put a few slides up. Watch your eyes, Scott. So to give this some historical perspective, what I thought first, there's only four of these slides, is to look visually, what is our fund balance? This is, was just presented at the audit. This is the current, the year that just ended, June 30th. My pointer's not going to work. It's all right. June 30th, this was our last, the audit that was just given to us. There are four pieces to our fund balance: non-spendable, restricted, assigned, and unassigned. And there's little subscripts, but these are the dollars associated in each, end of each fiscal year. What we're talking about for our fund balance tonight will be the red section, the restricted section. This is what we've been applying over time. You can see that overall, the restricted has been, has been coming down slightly over time, that's according to a plan that we've seen over and over again. The non-spendable or prepaid expenses, what happens, based on timing again for accounting entries, we do prepay, is considered prepaid before we get into July 1, some of our insurance costs and other transactions. That stays fairly consistent each year. Under restricted, there's money set aside for tax surcharge. The Repair Reserve, we just talked about. The Insurance Reserve, retirement contributions, which are for ERS, not TRS. Employee benefit accrued liability, these are for compensated absences. When people retire, we have to pay certain expenses. Unemployment benefits, and that's the restricted ones. The assigned are encumbrances, so that, those are assigned by the purchasing agent, who has the right to enter into contracts based on board policy. So our purchasing agent issues contracts and purchase orders on behalf of the board. This number moves around a little bit, but it's not a lot of money, $400,000, we'll say, in average. And then designated for subsequent years' expenditures, this is the amount the board designates through this budget process to give back each year. The target each year is roughly 2% of the budget, is what is saved from the prior year and given back the following year. And then finally, the unassigned. The unassigned is the piece, when people talk about fund balance, they're usually talking about this little piece down here, excuse me, the purple on the top. The unassigned is that limit of up to 4% of your following year's budget, is what you're allowed by law to have in that purple piece. And that's available for the board to spend at its discretion, based on legal constraints, but that's your flexibility, if you want to look at it from that perspective. This gets a little busier. Now we're just looking at that red section, that fat section in the middle, all those restrictions. What I did here is show each one and go out from the big, the box around the middle, 1415, this is what was just presented at the audit at year-end, and what happens going forward five years. Tax surcharge are analyzed each year, and I didn't put any assumptions in there, other than it will stay flat, but it'll be based on what the claims that Susan has. And what we do is we reserve 50% of what's being claimed against the district. And that's been our experience, about half of what's being claimed gets paid out. So that money is set aside each year based on an analysis, so I didn't try to estimate what that would be. The second, the Repair Reserve, the Repair Reserve, we talked about at the next meeting, asking for a public hearing and then spending that $242,645. It's highlighted at the bottom, it'd be appropriated to the Transportation Facility Capital Project. After that, you see the line is dashed, there's no more Repair Reserve. The board in the future could establish another one if they chose to. The next is our largest part of our restricted fund balance, Insurance Reserve. And you can see where we started out, $8,343,201, and the negative numbers underneath there are what's being proposed over time to give back to help offset the debt service.
Greg, I just want to say one thing, just for the benefit of maybe most of the board members here, actually, is that the $242,645 really was established quite a long time ago, really as a result of almost a deferred maintenance plan that boards way back when decided, and this was one of the factors that led to the consideration of the major bond issues that came out in the late 90s. But the $242,645, really, you can almost track back, I think, into the early 90s, maybe late 80s, and sort of moving forward. But it was really through the deferred maintenance, and so that's why eliminating it is really what we should have done years ago, and I think Greg is very smart at this point to say it's enough with his fund.
We have, we have a legitimate legal purpose for it. It's needed now.
Especially it's maintenance. To great extent.
And it is really, it really is like a repair project they were doing. So I think my laser's working out a little bit. So this is the starting balance. Each year, these are the amounts that you'll see on the next slide, of money's being used to help take the top off of our debt service, where it's very high, and you'll see how it fits together in the next couple of slides. Retirement contributions, this is to offset ERS payments, if you choose to offset them that way. What's being proposed is we could potentially use that $990,000 out of here. Once again, it's to appropriate to the Transportation Facility Project. We don't have to make any action immediately on this. We're going to continue to look at this and come back with a final recommendation on these monies. Out in year 2019, 20, and I'll show you this on the next screen, we will need to come up with additional monies, because the Insurance Reserve at that point would be exhausted. There won't be any money, provided we stay on this path. This isn't an obligation of the board, this is a plan.
So is the 1.3 related to debt service?
Yes.
Not related to paying, making the ERS at that point?
Right. That's correct. And the idea for the ERS is, the rates right now are coming down, it's a good time to put money into it, and the rates go up, it's a good time to take money out, to take the spike off of those costs. So there's still...
Smooth out the contributions.
Yes, smooth out the contribution, the cash flow for that. Oops, jump forward. The EBLR I talked about, this is compensated absences. Once again, there's an analysis done each year that we have to do as part of our audit, where we identify all the retirees and the costs. I didn't put any assumptions in here. This number does change each year. With our new contracts that we have, this number I expect to actually start to go down, not go up, in the future. Unemployment benefits, they are what they are, it's for unemployment reimbursement for schools. We're on a pay-as-you-go system, so any cost we incur, we pay 100% to the state insurance fund. So that money goes back in after they pay it out. It's one of these odd things, it's not a percentage of payroll, it's the actual cost. So we've been using this money over a period of time, taking about $50,000 each year, and you'll see that in the budget when we get to that point in March 2016. So, and what I looked at too, is what would happen to our restricted, remember that chart with the red in the middle? Right now, it's at $15,712,000. It would be used all the way down to, at the end, in the year 2020, June 30th, we still have $4,600,000. We'd have all of our tax certs covered, we'd have our EBLR covered, our employee benefit accrued liability covered. There still will be $1,005,000 for retirement contributions, and there's, so there's still about $105,000 left in our unemployment benefits. So even with all the spending, if we stay exactly to this, to the dollar, which we will not, but it'll be, this is the plan, we still have a healthy restricted fund balance that cover our obligations.
Is the Insurance Reserve from many years ago, or is it less?
No, it's probably about four years, it's probably about four years old at this point.
Four years.
So that's, that's for debt service, which you're going to show us in a minute, right?
Yeah, that's the next slide. So this is a little busy, but I like, I like showing the numbers at the bottom. The illustration illustrates the numbers at the bottom. I'll go through what's on the bottom first. This black area here, total debt service. We have principal payments, you can see it's $5,110,000. It drops down. I only showed through this part of the chart, so if I put any, any more years, you'd go blind, or I'd go blind. So it drops down to $2,505,000, and it pretty much stays at that once we get out to this range. So I just did it through, through this box here, 20, year 2021, 2022. So this is what we owe, this is what we'll be paying, this is our obligation, as it stands right now. Using the restricted fund balance, back to that first chart, that red... Using the restricted fund balance, back to that first chart, that red, that red section of the chart, we're using three restricted fund balances to pay for it. The insurance reserve makes up the large portion. There is retirement contribution, which I just mentioned, out in the year 2019, 2020, $1,003. Unemployment benefits chugs along at $50,000. And then we still keep over $100,000 in that reserve. We need no more support at that point. We do have a separate fund, it's not the general fund, it's the debt service fund balance. These are savings from the first two large projects we did. That money has been paid down similar to like the insurance reserve earlier to help take the top off of our, our costs because we'd be close to $7 million, we'd be paying out in debt service and we'd have to tax for that. So the net is that we end up this past year taxing for $5,340,000, but we paid out $6,800,000. And you can see the difference between each or, you take this and subtract these pieces. Showing it graphically, this blue, this blue chart, the bar chart that goes across here shows how much higher our debt service is until we get to the year 2019, 20. And then here, we get to the point where we, we bring down the debt service and it smoothes out. This is, just shows the net effect of applying monies to it. This red is the debt service fund balance, this is that $476,000. This next is the insurance reserve. So the impact is we go from nearly $7 million down to around $5 million. You can see those numbers down here as well. So what this shows, this last box is empty. That means there's no more debt at that point. Our debt is totally paid off at the end of 2026. So where the support is needed to bring these numbers down are these years. This was the past year, this is the one, two, three, four. The next five years is what we're really focusing on to bring the top off of, of this and using funds we already have. Another way to look at this quickly is, this is a simpler way of looking at it too. This is the tax impact here. You can see that same slope coming down. This is, the red is coming from the restricted fund balances and the green is the last piece of the appropriated debt service fund balance. So this is, this is what the plan calls for and this includes.
Tax impact meaning just from tax revenue, you're saying?
This is what, this will be the, the inter-fund transfer from the general fund in our budget to the debt service fund to pay for it. There'll be a piece there from here and then the rest of it comes from, from new taxes. This is already, this is already under the board's control, this upper section. So it's another easier way of looking at this. So what this illustration showed for fund balance was, was all in. This showed the impact of everything we talked about for the transportation project, plus what we've been doing over time to mitigate the debt service. So for me, it gives me a comfort level, I hope it does to the board that says, there's nothing that we're doing now that's going to make a material impact and have a, create a fiscal problem in the future. This is a minimal amount of money in the big picture. It does not make a material impact on taxes, either up or down, but it fits into a multiple year plan. So I want to show it all together so you can get a sense of this. When I come back with the first budget hearing in January, you'll see this chart again or something similar. It may just be this portion of it, but these numbers are what's behind it. This, this will not change for what you see for the five-year trend analysis. It'll be the, it'll be the same numbers. So it's almost a preview, but I thought it'd be appropriate tonight to bring an interview because that'd be a question I'd have as a board member. $990,000, what's that going to do to us? And the bottom line is, it fits in here and it fits into, it fits into a plan, it doesn't make any, we had no design in using retirement contributions to help with, with the debt service at any time. And we're still not. And there's still plenty, there's still plenty of funds available to have that smoothing effect on our, on our taxes.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to look through the debt piece of it because looking at the reserves, not looking at the debt piece is nonsensical because you can't get a appreciation.
Yeah, see, we have all this money, but you have this.
You're spending all this money down, but yes, you are, but the debt service is, is slowly dissipating. So it's going to offset the fact that the reserves are gone.
And look at that as an opportunity to help stay under the tax levy cap too, as that drops off. And if the tax levy cap stays, which who knows what's going to happen over time, it does give us some relief because in theory, if it went straight across, that'd be the ultimate, but we're, we're dropping each year. We're lowering what our, our net debt service is each year.
Great. One quick question, I think that's really helpful and thoughtful. The retirement contribution number, that gets down to say 2.8, something like that going forward, and we keep that somewhat static obviously because of the variability. What, what does that number look like in the last several years?
We've only, we've only had this for two years.
Okay.
So we had, it started in 1314. And we decided, well, that's the only, that's the only pension fund that we can actually put some fun, put some monies into. You can't do it for TRS, which is ironic because that's much bigger than ERS.
There is a bill on that.
There's always, there's always a bill on that. I don't want to be cynical, but yes, there is a bill on that.
Yeah. The retirement plan, that's a significant component of the overall budget liability.
For a budget cost, yeah.
Budget cost.
Right. Right. So what, what this does is, once again, this will create, even using a portion of this money, it still creates another lever that the board can choose to, to turn on or off as needed to help mitigate spikes in, in ERS rates. We're told now the ERS rate for 1617 will have a slight decrease. So that's good news. There's no pressure on using that towards mitigating a spike in that. And E, and TRS as well, which is not on here, but TRS rates, good news for next year, they're going to come down slightly too. So we have two, two good pieces of news and are looking at the budget being developed for 1617.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing this detail. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Greg.